And Megan, I believe this is it, right? I think Guy and Vic are indisposed.
Yes, I believe so. I reminded them it's 7:30. If they want to join, they can come on when they're ready.
Okay. Are we live? We're ready to go?
Yes, we are live.
All right, Megan, could you please read the statement of presiding officer, please?
Of course. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting, specifically the time, date, and public call and information were included in the meeting that was electronically sent to the Equusetanol and the Morris Daily Record and posted on township website. The agenda and public handouts for this meeting can be viewed online at www-longhillnj.gov. A public comment period will held and the order is listed on the meeting agenda.
Okay. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Megan, can you please take the roll?
Committee man Dorsey.
Here.
Committee man Ray.
Present.
Committee man Verlazim might be joining us at some point. Deputy Mayor Pasurcia might be joining us at some point. Mayor Lavender.
Present. Okay. First off, for those watching on YouTube, Zoom, or video, we're doing this meeting virtual today. We had three committee men that were in remote locations, and this just seemed to be the most productive way to do this, so we can still conduct business. So first off, we have a proclamation for Labor Day. Megan, can you share your screen, please?
Arbor Day, not Labor Day.
Did I say Labor Day?
Yes.
You're thinking summer already?
Yeah, and we have the whole summer to go. Arbor Day.
All right.
Okay. So I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life, giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city, Long Hill, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. So therefore, I, Scott Lavender, Mayor of Township Long Hill, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28th, as Arbor Day, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support our efforts to protect our trees in the Midlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And to this end, earlier this week, I attended the Shade Tree Commission meeting, and they are going to have a number of trees to give away, small saplings that we can be planting around town. I know next Monday, the Boy Scouts are probably going to be planting 25 or 50 of them in Hickstreak. So when that announcement comes out, I'd urge everybody to pay attention to it and participate. So thank you very much for that. Next, I think we're done with proclamations and presentations, right, Megan?
Yes, we will be pushing the 12 baskets presentation to the May 10th meeting.
Perfect. Okay. All right. So then let's move forward to ordinances. Ordinance 516-23, this is the first reading introduction, salaries and wages ordinance. We're making some changes here, adding the... Well, Randy and Jack, do you want to kind of comment on this?
Randy should probably comment. This is his ordinance.
And Megan, just if I missed anything, just yell out. So this ordinance, while it looks very involved, it's only changing a couple of things. We are adding the Community Services Project Program Manager at a full-time rate for $25,000 to $60,000. We are including the Special Law Enforcement Officer for at a rate of $25 to $25 an hour. I'm not going to go through all the recreation, but in this recreation, I believe we pretty much did most of them. We adjusted the hourly rates to reflect the new minimum wage, and in some areas bumped up the top, the upper limit a little bit. Did I miss something on this, Megan? Okay, that's basically what this ordinance is doing.
Good. And this is the first reading, so we will have public hearing open for comment on May 24th next month. So can I have a motion to approve ordinance 513-23?
So moved.
Second.
Committee man Dorsey.
Yes.
Committee man Ray.
Yes.
Mayor Lavender.
Yes. Okay. Moving on, ordinance 517-23, this is a first reading and introduction, creating a new Chapter 19 in the Township Code entitled Administrative Fees for Registration of Certificate of Insurance Required for Owners of Businesses and Rental Units. Jack, do you want to comment on this?
Yes, Mayor, this is another new state law requiring the township to do something. I don't know what happened to state mandates, they pay. But the owners of all businesses and rental units have to file a certificate of insurance with the township, and this just establishes an administrative fee for the handling of those registrations.
Okay, so we're passing this to comply with state law.
Correct. We don't have any choice.
Got it. Okay. And this is a first reading. Public hearing will be scheduled for May 24th.
That's correct.
Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 517-23?
So moved.
Second.
Committee man Dorsey.
Yes.
Committee man Ray.
Yes.
Mayor Lavender.
Yes. Okay. Number six, consent agenda resolutions. Would anyone like to pull a resolution to discuss? Where does anybody need to abstain from anything? I don't know that I see any abstentions. Megan, any advice on this? And Jack, I think you're adding something to this for the reappointment of Judge Bright, correct?
I'm just typing the email to circulate it. Yes, it's reappointing Judge Bright for a three-year term, commencing May 6th, I believe it is, and ending May 5th of 2026.
Now, what's the number of that new resolution?
23134.
Correct. You'll have it momentarily.
Okay. All right. So can I have a motion to approve resolutions 23-116 through 23-134?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second, whatever. It doesn't matter.
Committee man Dorsey.
Yes.
Committee man Ray.
Yes.
Mayor Lavender.
Yes. Okay. Moving on, liaison reports. I kind of just gave a liaison report from the Shade Tree Commission, but Matt, anything for you, DPW or Police?
Yeah, there's some stuff. There's actually, let's see, Al sent me... Interestingly, the mulch sales are over. We sold out. I happened to be down there dropping off a TV the other day, and the pile looked very small, and that was Monday. So mulch is sold out. Available from the county, they will deliver. You have to go to the MCMUA website and make an appointment, and I'll be posting a flyer on the DPW Facebook page with more information on that. Compost is still available, so if anybody needs compost, go down during the DPW hours and take care of it. The new street sweeper is out and about. It completed the entire township and actually helped clean up after the street fair. They're now cleaning out catch basins. They're going to install the 20 challenge grand trees starting next week. Of course, lawn maintenance is started and will not stop until the fall. And as I said, the catch basin repairs. Also, the DPW will be on Long Hill Road the week of May 15th. So it's about two weeks from now. They're going to be doing repairs. So just the road will be closed due to some repairs, and detours will be placed. They will post the route shortly, but don't worry about till May 15th. In the PD report, not interestingly, the other day, to use the legal term, there was a creeper lurking around the lacrosse practices at Canter Park the other day. And actually, tonight, I got a report from one of the coaches that there were police officers there, and the parents and the kid, the parents, basically, the coach has felt a lot safer. But basically, what Alexis wants everybody to know is, if you see something suspicious, call the police. Don't post it on 911. Don't call the coach. Don't call the rec department. The police are only as good as the information they have. So if there's something suspicious, please call them. They're here to serve us, and they do a great job. So let them know, because they can't prevent or protect people if they don't know about the problem. And from the fire department report, I think the best way to go about this is I see Donna Fucci's logged on. Unfortunately, there was a fire at her house last week, and luckily, her neighbor, I think it's Mr. Hernandez, I think that's his name, alerted Donna and her family that there was a fire because he saw it from his yard. Yeah, Hernandez. So thank you for that. Now Donna, she might be coming and talking about this, but I don't want to steal her thunder. But Donna posted something very nice on social media, so I'm basically going to read that. I just have to pull it up as soon as I find it. So Donna said, he says, although the addition to our home was a total loss, thanks be to God, we were all able to get out safely due to the wonderful neighbors who spotted the fire before we knew it was happening. They not only called the Police Department of Fire, but they came banging on the door, which is Mr. Hernandez and his family, and alerted us to get out of the house, basically. The first responders arrived on the scene. They knocked the fire down very quick, and as Brendan will tell you, that's all about response time, because that could have been very bad very quickly. It put out the fire, but it didn't stop there. She wanted to thank the both fire departments, Chief Gallo, the first aid, EMTs, Lisa, Bob English, the PD, Officer in Charge Tramburlo, and all the firefighters from all the departments that came to the scenes. Not only were our bravest there from Millington to Sterling, but outside mutual aid companies came in too to help us out, as they always do. And she liked to thank the Community Services Director Shane Daly. Even though Shane was out of town, she helped coordinate with the township officials in getting the Red Cross on the scene so they could have some housing and lodging. She said many thanks to Lyons, Berkeley Heights, and our family. Said her and her family eternally grateful. Donna, I'm sorry I stole your thunder, but I saw that, and you were there, and you lived it, and that's just a good example of teamwork, neighbors getting Donna and her family out of there safely, the PD getting there quickly, both fire companies, the rescue squad, our mutual aid companies, and even when they got done with their job, our Community Services Director stepped in and helped Donna and her family get the appropriate assistance and support they needed while they were temporarily out of the house. So great job, everybody, and most importantly, everyone came home safely. So thank you. I'm done, Scott.
Thanks, Matt. Brendan, anything?
No reports from me. I was hoping to be given regular updates on the planning board, but they've, as you know, they've canceled the last two meetings, so nothing from me.
Okay. Guy? Guy, you there? You have any liaison reports? Okay. All right. Let's go on. Randy, administrator's report.
Okay, I was going to cover some of the stuff that Committee man Dorsey took care of. One of the other things that I wanted to mention, we have discussed in a couple of areas in town that people have, the residents have brought up as, I'll call them problematic areas with various streets and so forth. So talking with the Officer in Charge Tramburlo, we're going to be, she is going to be working with her officers who basically set up the Traffic Advisory Committee. We're going to be having a meeting in early, hopefully, early May to discuss several items. You know, I know of three, and the police say that they even have more, and come back to the committee and make some recommendations.
Great. And yeah, even just most recently, we got some tip-offs from some residents. I'll say the Oaks Road guard rail, or lack thereof, that we'll be addressing. So you know, putting together that Traffic Safety Committee is a timely thing indeed. So thanks for getting that going. Anything else, Randy?
That's all I have tonight.
Okay. And I'll just kind of wrap up here, too. I neglected to mention, this past Sunday was the street fair. It was an extravaganza, I'll say. I think Dennis Sandow did a phenomenal job, as usual, getting all the vendors and the participants. I know, Matt, as far as street fairs go, I would say that was one of the better ones, wouldn't you say?
That was very, I mean, I had to leave in the middle of the afternoon, but even at 4 o'clock, that place was still jumping. So I think the weather cleared up around 10:30, 11:00. People just came out and drove, so it was nice to see everybody out. And most importantly, a lot of community involvement. Our first responders were there. A bunch of members of the Police Department were there on their own time, even the ones that weren't working. So thank everybody, and it's great just to have the public interact. I saw kids going out of the fire trucks, the ambulances, interacting with the police. I think it just went very well.
And the weather was just unbelievable. I don't know how Dennis does it. He just seems to turn off the rain. So Dennis, tremendous job. You have our gratitude for that. Okay. Let's move forward. Discussion, White Bridge Road tree replacement. Is there anything that we have to talk about on that?
I've been playing a little phone tag with Mr. Steteau from the engineers at the county. So we haven't been able to connect. We do not have any draft of an agreement from the county as of yet. So I'm hoping, you know, in the next day or two, to connect with him to get more detailed information. And basically, what are options?
Okay. So you're just balls in his court then, right?
I think right now it is. I'd like to just get more information. So you know, when you guys ask me the questions that we have, we'll have the answers. And then at that point, we can forward it to the Shade Tree Commission for their discussions. You know, and keep in mind, DEP is involved with this, because it's a tree replacement for the White Bridge Road project. So any kind of plan has to be approved by the DEP. They have approved a plan that the county got together, and that's the plan that I want to get more information, how they came up with the plan, and so forth, so that we can guide our Shade Tree Commission and ourselves as to what is required, what's necessary, and like I said, what are our options are.
Right. Okay. Sounds good. Anybody else have any comment on that? All right. Next topic would be special events permits. Jack, and I think you've been crafting something for us, right?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I circulated a draft two of the ordinance which incorporated the changes we discussed at the last meeting. I can go through those, but as you'll see on there, I highlighted the changes since the first draft, because after a while, it gets hard to follow track changes. So first, under special event, in the definition section, I removed paragraphs A and B, which were open to the general public, and as a private event with more than a certain number of anticipated attendees. Then I went down to the next title of section, you'll see, is that I tried to define block party to make it so the block parties are not subject to these requirements, just neighborhood block parties. You know, it's not easy to define, but I think everyone will, excuse me, know what it is. Then in section 4 hyphen 6.2, I changed it to, from 60 days to 30 days, as was suggested at the last meeting. In some, in a number of places, I changed it so they have to come to the township committee and not just the township clerk. I took out, last time, as you know, I took out all the requirements to concessionaires get licenses. Now, I also changed it so they don't have to show 501(c)(3) status necessarily. They just have to show they're a nonprofit, which gives the township committee some more flexibility. And then just I changed, updated some of the local civic groups that are exempt from the fee requirement of the ordinance. At Matt's suggestion, I changed Forest to Long Hill Education Foundation, and I took out the American Legion since they're no longer in existence. I'd be happy to make any other changes that anyone thinks is necessary, especially Megan, since she's the one who has to deal with it.
How do you prove you're a nonprofit without showing documentation?
Well, you still have to show some kind of documentation, but you know, you may not be a 501(c)(3). That was Matt's suggestion, I think. Somebody made, it was a suggestion at the last meeting. I would probably leave 501(c)(3) in, and then the township committee could be flexible if somebody, you know, doesn't have that status, but clearly are a nonprofit. The 501(c)(3), as you know, just allows donors to deduct their donations from their federal income taxes.
Right.
Yep. But Jack, I mean, I think that there are a number of other organizations. I know Millington is not 501(c)(3).
Oh, okay.
It's a 501(c)(3). So I mean, a proof of nonprofit status, I think, is good enough.
Yeah, you may have made the suggestion. I couldn't remember who made it, so it was probably you.
Yeah.
It's up to you all. You know, but I think the township committee can ordinarily require a 501(c)(3) status, but for some organizations, if they don't have it, it can be waived.
So when you apply the test of the changes to this, can you just provide us with a snapshot of a typical entity that would be looking for this permit?
Yeah, I guess the street fair is the obvious example. So now they would just have to apply as the sponsor. They would not, and apparently, this wasn't done anyway, even though the ordinance required it. The individual concessions don't have, concessionaires don't have to apply. They'll be covered by the sponsor's permit. If they're nonprofits, and the money's going towards the township or township entities, then those entities don't have to pay for police coverage at the event. And that's basically it. You know, those are the changes. We really tried to streamline it and simplify it more than anything, and take out the language which wasn't being enforced anyway.
Okay. Matt, any comment?
No.
All right. So yeah, maybe next step on this, Jack, is, you know, let us individually study this and then decide if we want to bring this forward for a first reading.
Okay. Just let me know. It'll be easy. I'll just plug it into our ordinance template.
All right. Brendan, any other comments before we quit on that one?
None from me, thanks.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The other discussion. Oh, I did want to mention one thing. You know, I went to the Uncommon Thread today. They were having their annual field day, and you know, April is Autism Awareness Month, and I had a great opportunity to walk around and talk to folks. I talked to Greg Carr, who is the founder of the Uncommon Thread there in 331 Elm Street, which is the old grammar school. I got a tour of the inside to see what their facilities are and really learn what they do. You know, they have about over 40 children that receive therapy there, and they do a terrific job. It just sounds like it's been growing over the years. I invited Greg maybe to come in at a future meeting, maybe even in June, just to talk for five minutes and raise awareness of what their organization does. But I just wanted to give a shout out to the good work that they're doing. And you know, I think it's something that we should socialize with folks in town so they know, you know, a great mission like this is going on. So anyway, there's that. Okay. Any other discussion items? Seeing none? Any older new business? We have one thing.
We have a few things.
We have a few things. Yes, we do have a few things. I didn't turn the page. So first off, William Menard wants to resign from the library board. Do I hear a motion to accept William Menard's resignation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have a mayoral appointment with Township Committee approval for library trustees is the mayor's representative, Emily Chen, with a term that will expire December 31st, 2023. So can I have a motion to appoint Emily Chen?
Actually, you don't need, Mayor, if I can interject, actually, I don't need a motion for this, because this is your designate.
Oh. Okay.
Okay.
Everybody okay with it? Yeah.
Also, William Menard was the mayor's representative. So Emily Chen is just taking that position on the library board or the library trustees.
Got it.
Because you actually remain the trustee as the mayor, but you can designate someone else to act in your stead.
Okay. Very good. All right. Next, we have a Township Committee appointment, and this one we are voting on, right, Megan? This is beautification. Meredith Crawford Collins. I want to give a shout out to her because Megan helped us set up at the street fair. Beautification Committee had a booth there sporting the rain barrels that they're selling. But Meredith Crawford Collins, with a term expiring 12/31/2023, can I have a motion to appoint Meredith to the beautification committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then moving forward, announcements. So first off, Memorial Day Parade, May 29th, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Be there, always a good thing. Also, the PBA kickoff to summer event, June 24th, 1:00 to 6:00, 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Matt, any comments on that, the PBA kickoff?
No, I think it was a good time last year, that had a good turnout. This will be the second annual, so hopefully, more people show up. While you're on the Memorial Day Parade, just a reminder, people haven't gone down Main Street. The DPW put all the veterans banners up again there in a town hall, so take a look around. They're really cool to see. They have some really interesting pictures on there and a lot of dedicated servicemen and women from the town.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And this next one's very important. Primary election is June 6th, but please note, the senior center will no longer be a polling location for districts five and six. It's being moved to the library meeting room. Randy, can you provide the public with the reason for that?
I think I'm going to have Megan discuss that, because she's the election officer, and she's been in touch with representatives why we don't get it. So go ahead, Megan.
Thank you, Randy. So there was the Department of Justice that came out to the senior center polling location during the primary election for 2022. I received a report from the county earlier this year, basically saying that there was a lot of issues with ADA compliance on that particular location. We had our engineer put together an estimate as to how much it would cost the township to rectify those, and it was about $48,000. And as you know, that specific location, that senior center is actually, the senior center, the senior citizens club owns the building, but the Board of Ed owns the property. So we sublease it from the Board of Ed, no, I'm sorry. We lease it from the Board of Ed, and then we sublease it to the seniors. So I didn't see that it would be appropriate to be spending this amount of money in that location, and we decided to move it to the library. We didn't have enough time to deal with all of the issues, so.
Yeah. And what is it? It's like the sidewalk isn't the right width or something like that?
There's grading issues. The door is too heavy. There's a whole punch list.
Okay. So it's nothing terribly drastic that prevents the seniors from using the building, but it technically doesn't meet ADA standards, therefore, it's not compliant as a polling place.
Correct.
Okay. And so that's why it's being moved to the library meeting room, which is ADA compliant. So again, if you're So again, if you're in Districts 5 and 6, you're not going to the Senior Center, you're going to the Library Meeting Room. Okay, any other announcements?
Mayor, if I could, I just want to elaborate on the rain barrels, which is a fabulous program the Beautification Committee is doing. There is a link on the Long Hill website to order your rain barrels, so by all means, go on and order your rain barrels.
And I did, I did have a look at those upfront. It's a pretty, it's a pretty cool kit. It's got the spigots and the, and the hoses, and these things can be daisy chained together. I'm gonna be buying one myself. So, any other announcements? Seeing none, I'll open the meeting to the public. Please, remarks and statements pertaining to any matter, please limit them to three minutes. Anybody with their hand raised, Megan?
Yes, there's a Mary Ann that would like to speak. Let me just get up my...
Hey.
Hey, please state your name and address, Mary Ann.
You know me, but, Mary Ann, in, in 110 Lackawanna Boulevard, Gillette.
Good to see you again.
Yes, just a couple of questions. First of all, why was this meeting, and I apologize, I, I am just digging into so many things right now. Why was this meeting virtual tonight? Is it because Vic and Guy are ill, or?
Yeah, so the meeting's virtual tonight because both Guy, Vic, and Matt are out of town, and...
Matt's here, okay.
Yeah, otherwise we wouldn't have a quorum.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. Okay, and again, I apologize, because I zoomed in late, okay? With regards, what is, what are we talking about in terms of the 501(c)(3)? Because I am dealing right now, I just want to let you know, you all guys, you all know that I run, as an administrator, a group against the fascia housing, okay? I'm not sure if you're aware of what's going down in deep South Jersey regarding Murphy, and how he's using his executive powers right now to overrule the home rule of townships, but I'm now on five executive boards there, then, you know, I'm crazy, okay? But my question, what was the issue regarding the 501(c)(3)?
Yeah, we were talking about, we were talking about the special event permits and exemptions from having to get that, you know, so that, that was really what that was about.
Okay, because it's very complicated, okay, because, like I said, I'm dealing with, I'm just gonna put it this way, they are putting windmills up throughout our shores, and the fact that I run a group of 200,000 members for 9/11, I'm very proactive, because, I'm sorry, you know, our US mil, our US military right now has finally stated how far we could be a target. So I'm very deeply involved, but the complications with the 501(c)(3) are extremely difficult. And, you know, what, the group, the main group that I've joined, actually had to kind of remove myself for personal reasons, because of my net worth, but it's, it's not an easy thing to establish, that's the only comments I wanted to say. Okay, my next question, regarding the Planning Board, I see there's been a series of cancellations. What's going on, guys? I mean, we need a master plan. Megan, please.
Brendan, you wanna, you wanna field that question?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, I mean, the, there is a subcommittee on, on the Planning Board who are, who are working on the ma, on the master plan and have been working on it. We didn't have any applications to discuss, and that's why the past two meetings were canceled, but we will be, there is a plan in place to, to begin the public hearings on the master plan within the next few months, anyway, so, so we, we're under the gun, we need to get it done this year. And so, Mary Ann, there is a, there is a, there is a plan in place to get it done, and it has been, it has been worked on, and it has been worked on.
Okay, Brendan, and with, I just want to comment, because prior to this, I, I had made a comment, I would like to be part of that Master Plan Committee, and I was told, okay, in one of these meetings, and this was per Guy, that he dismantles anything in terms of redevelopment and the Master Plan Committee, because they were not functioning well, okay? I advise you all not to use topology, because it's bullshit, okay? And I'm sorry, this is going way too long. I don't know if you guys realize, but with the master plan right now, you need to incorporate climate changes. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, yeah, we, we are aware of it, just to, you know, the, there, there isn't a master plan committee as, as such, there was for a number of years. We don't have one anymore, and it really is within the, a subcommittee of the, of the Planning Board, and it's quite rightly with the Planning Board, because it's a, it's a Planning Board document, Mary Ann, but we will be holding public hearing, hearings and all the various elements. And, you know, as you, as you rightly point out, the, there have been some, some new sections that have to be, that have to be incorporated, and certainly we've been, they're, they're, they're being worked on.
Okay, can I be part of that, or do I need to be nominated?
No, there, there isn't a committee as such, there will be the opportunity to be heard at the public hearings, so.
I've already asked that, and I'm gonna, Brendan, I'm sorry, I'm gonna put this to Mayor Lavender, because of my background. Can I be nominated to this committee to help them?
We'll talk about that outside of this meeting with Mr. Sandow.
Okay, thank you, because, I mean, I'm sorry, I think it's been four Planning Board Committees that have been canceled, and there was one where they were gonna set an agenda, to which there was no agenda, okay? Things are getting really bad, okay? Like I said, I've now engaged myself like a lunatic, involved in everything, you know, people, if, if you've even read about it, but South Jersey, New Jersey's so regional, but South Jersey right now, basically, they are looking, and this is Murphy. They're looking to implement right now all this offshore wind turbine and energy. And Murphy right now has basically been using his executive power to insert every possible thing, okay? Townships no longer have the capability, when it comes to renewable energy, to even speak up with regards to what's coming to their townships, whether it's a substation, et cetera. I don't know if people are like factoring this in, if they're aware of it. But now, I've been pulled in, I don't know why, I mean, I should just put myself in the sand at this point, but five core committee member, you know, committees, I have a meeting that I was holding for this Friday with Bramnik and two Assembly people. So my question is, it's really important with regards to getting this master plan. And I don't, I don't honestly understand what is so difficult. If we could expend X amounts, and I'm not throwing, you know, I am not throwing this in anyone's faces at this point, but with regards to the chief, if we could throw X amount, and I have sent information out to people, I have seen a master plan, and actually, Mayor Lavender, I may have sent that to you, I'm not quite sure, okay? But whoever crafted this, it was unbelievable. We have all the documentation, and it just seems like to me we're, we're dealing in... I appreciate everyone who volunteers to do this, but it's at a point where we have to go beyond old school and documentation, and just get it done, okay? And like I said, I know, I know who is corrupted, and if I could find it again, I know I sent it to you, but there is someone, it's a group who did an unbelievable job in terms of putting a master plan together. It was the most, it, it, it blew me away, okay? So if we need to expense $50,000 personally, I think it would be worth their while to tailor everything that we have in hand, and just get it done, and protect ourselves, because we have 2025 coming along. There's all these meetings coming up, okay? I signed up for everything. Unfortunately, the universe is against us, okay? And I don't know, with the Fascia Housing Center, I really don't know what 2025 will come, and what, I mean, do they want to put, okay, we don't have the land, okay? Free space, yeah, let, let's acquire it, okay? But like, 2025, what do they want us to do?
Is that a question?
Yes, it's not, it's not an attack. Scott, I don't attack people, I am just trying to help, you know? I'm just involved in so much, I see perspective from every possible angle. And again, you know, it was, it was disappointing that there was no Planning Board Committee, there's no organization. And, you know, it was like, I don't know, four years ago, three years ago, I sat with David Hands, who had a stack of papers, and, you know, again, nothing against volunteers from topology, and, and they're bullshit. They destroyed Morristown.
I, be careful with that.
I don't have to be careful, Scott, I'm, I'm a different person.
Okay, anyway, Mary Ann, we appreciate your passion on this, that's obvious. And, you know, I learned a few things about...
Stop laughing at me, because you're getting it now.
So I learned a few things about South Jersey, so thanks for that, I'm gonna look into that. Megan, anybody else on Zoom? You're on mute, Megan?
Sorry. If anybody else on Zoom would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand now. I don't see anyone, Mayor.
Okay, well, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn into executive?
With no further action, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What link do we use, Megan?
This is the first one.
Okay.
All right, see you there.